Welcome to the March twenty-six, twenty twenty-four regular session for the Maryland City Council for the city of Hagerstown. This meeting is now called to order, and first we have that invocation given by council member, Madam Schindler. Please stand.
Honorable members of the elected body, esteemed colleagues and compassionate citizens. As we gather in this chamber today, let us pause to reflect on the recent tragedies that have touched our community and our state this week. In moments of sorrow and loss, we are reminded of the fragility of life and the importance of coming together in support and solidarity. In the wake of adversity, let us invoke the spirit of empathy and compassion. May we extend a hand of comfort and support to those who are grieving and offer solace to those who are struggling. Let us be beacons of hope in the darkness, reminding each other that in our darkest hours, we're not alone. As we navigate the complexities of governance, let us keep in mind the profound truth that life is short and that our time here is precious. Let us use our positions of privilege and responsibility to uplift and empower those in need and to build a community that values kindness, empathy, and human connection above all else. Thank you, and may our shared commitment to supporting those in need serve as a guiding light in the days and weeks to come. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Announcements, rules of procedure, effective December fifteenth, twenty twenty. Use of cell phones during meetings is restricted. Our correspondence for distribution to elected officials should be provided to the city clerk and should include a copy for the city clerk for inclusion in the official record. Our meeting schedule for April is Tuesday, April second, twenty twenty-four. We have a work session at four P M. Tuesday, April ninth, we have a work session at four P M. Tuesday, April sixteenth, work session at four P M. And then Tuesday, April twenty-third is our regular session at seven P M. Tuesday, April thirtieth, there is no meeting scheduled, and we have a public hearing, and the first is annexation of fifty-five West Oak Ridge Drive, Building One, A dash two zero, two, two zero, two four, dash, oh, one.
For the annexation of fifty-five West Oak Ridge Drive, Building One. Oh, there we go. All right. A little bit about this property. It is located at fifty-five West Oak Ridge Drive. Tax map fifty-seven, grid three, parcel one seventy-seven. The property fronts West Oak Ridge, and it is contiguous to the city and within the medium-range growth area. The total acreage is around seventy-four acres, and in twenty twenty-one, the value was assessed at thirteen million dollars, and it is currently assessed at eighty-seven million dollars. On March twenty-second, twenty twenty-two, the property owner entered into an annexation agreement to receive city water and wastewater services with the following requirements. That the annexation of Building One doesn't start until U N O or December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three, whichever comes first. And the annexation of Building Two doesn't start until U N O or December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four, whichever comes first. Currently, it is zoned in the county as H I or Highway Interchange, and the proposed zoning is I M U or Industrial Mix D E O's. The adjacent city zoning is I G and I N S T or Industrial General and Institutional. It is also in the city's medium-range growth area, county's urban growth area, and the state's priority funding area. Water and wastewater will be served by the city. This annexation will not involve taking ownership and maintenance of the county roads. Public safety services will be by city police and city fire, and electric, electric utility service is provided by Potomac Edison. The planning commission reviewed the zoning requests and the plan, and they recommend the requested, the proposed zoning. To comply with state law, four public notices were published advertising this hearing. Signs were also posted near the property to notify adjacent owners. The plan and the resolution were also sent to the following agencies at least thirty days prior to the hearing. And they were sent to the county, tri-county council, and Maryland Department of Planning. On January thirtieth, the resolution was introduced and the plan was adopted. Today, we are having a public hearing, and next week, it is scheduled to have a follow-up discussion and scheduled to approve the resolution. And at this time, I would like to enter into the record the certificate of advertisement and the file by reference for A dash twenty twenty-four dash, oh, one.
And the record will remain open? Anybody in the audience that would like to speak? Any questions, council? All right, we're good. All right. The next one? The record will be open for ten days? Until the second?
Till the second, April second.
Till April second. Annexation of right-of-way, um, row on portion of I seventy, S H A, M V A, Colonel Henry K Douglas Drive, A dash two zero, two four, dash, zero, two.
Okay. This is the annexation for A dash twenty twenty-four, oh, two. Um, this is the annexation of state right-of-way sections of I seventy and Colonel Henry K Douglas Drive. It also includes two properties, eighteen-three oh-six and eighteen-three twenty, Colonel Henry K Douglas Drive, which is the Motor Vehicle Administration, State Highway Administration. It is around forty acres. Currently, it's zoned in the county as H I, and the proposed city zoning is C R or Commercial Regional. It is also in the M R G A, U G A, and P F A. Water and wastewater will be served by the city. This annexation will not involve taking ownership of the roads maintained by the state. Public safety services will be by city police and city fire. Electric utility service is provided by Potomac Edison, and the planning commission reviewed the zoning requests and the plan and recommend the proposed zoning. To comply with state law, four public notices were published advertising this hearing. Signs were also posted near the property to notify adjacent owners. And the plan and resolution were sent to the agencies at least thirty days prior to the hearing, which included Washington County, tri-county council, and Maryland Department of Planning. On the thirtieth of January, the resolution was introduced, the plan was adopted, and today we're having this hearing. A follow-up discussion is scheduled for May twenty-first, and it is scheduled for, the resolution is scheduled to be approved on May twenty-eighth. And at this time, I would like to enter into the record the certificate of advertisement and the file by reference for A twenty twenty-four, oh, two.
Is there anyone that would like to speak? Council, questions?
May I just note, um, if we can make sure that, though, any minutes in record reflects that Ms. Wu was previously sworn and had been, remained sworn for that second hearing.
Okay, thank you.
The record, the record will remain open until April second? Or is it ten days? The record will remain open for ten days? Thank you. And citizen comments? We got one person signed up, and it's Stephanie. Um, yeah, please state your name and address for the record, and you have three minutes.
Stephanie Phillips, Summit Avenue, Hagerstown, Maryland. I gave a comment a while back in another geography. Time doesn't heal all wounds, but with it comes more understanding and more clarity. My father probably had the highest national security clearance you could get in this country, and my family, I'm told, has been under the national security classified since before I was even born. As a teenager, I was warned by my local police department officer Paul Quinn Wheaton Glennmont, Montgomery County, Maryland, that I was in danger, that I was being targeted. He gave me a few instructions and said otherwise he wasn't at liberty to disclose the details. But at some point, things would make more sense. By the time I was eighteen, I experienced three unavoidable collisions. The third one was while I was pregnant. I ended up to have placed that child for adoption who grew up and became an intern working in the Capitol for Senator Edward Kennedy. He was born during the era where he was running as our president, Democratic nominee. You know, the last few years, the more I study my genealogy, the more the hostilities have seemed to increase. My family is one of the last landholders in a geography where there have long been plans to put in a substantial dam, and many of the community have been run out of town. Your area somewhat mirrors this same disposition. I want to commend you for having your work sessions on television. I would like to encourage you and the county to consider doing more of this with some of your committees, like the Women's Commission, diversity, inclusion, and in particular, the planning and zoning. The most or more advanced notice the community gets, like as soon as applications are filed to re, repurpose from like, say, residential to commercial. The more time they have to prepare, um, and give comment to development that might not be in the best interest of the community. We experience a national emergency, and our food comes from far away rather than locally. Your four H could explain to people how much food could be produced per square acre for how many people. When you do that math, it really exemplifies why this is so important and to preserve as much agriculture as possible. I think this will help ensure your security, our law enforcement security, and it will help ensure the entire community. It's been a very difficult time. I do really appreciate the increased security. All business of parking, I don't have any suggestions for that except for that I do see there are certain advantages, and, and I do have a small tab, and I'm good for it, but I haven't gotten around to that yet. I want to thank you all again for your service to the community. As far as any of the other personal business, that is personal. But what I learned and experienced personally, I do like to find something beneficial for others. One person in your community suggested you might want to consider making some of the streets more one-way. Might increase the safety. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Stephanie. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Is there first, is there minutes for March, I'm sorry, February sixth, February thirteenth, February twentieth, and February twenty-seventh?
Madam Mayor, we move for the approval of minutes as presented for the mayor and council meetings held on February sixth, thirteen, twenty, and twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-four.
Second.
Discussion. Those in favor? Those opposed? Motion carries. Consent agenda, community engagement, open container exemption for twenty twenty-four downtown events? Or is this, um, just a consent agenda? Okay, consent agenda? I mean, I was on my way.
I hereby move that all the consent agenda be approved as presented.
Second.
Discussion. Those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. An ordinance for the conveyance and fee simple of said lot for wastewater pump station number thirty by Richmond Homes of Maryland, Inc. to the city of Hagerstown.
Madam Mayor, I hereby move for the approval of an ordinance for the conveyance and fee simple of said lot for wastewater pump station number thirty as describing the attached deed by dated July twenty-fifth, two thousand and eighteen, and recorded among the land records of Washington County, Maryland, at Lieber five eight zero one, Folio four seven seven, and also denoted as pump station lot and plat number eighty-three seventy-four, also recorded among the land records of Washington County, Maryland. Pump station number thirty serves residences located in the Hager's Crossing community.
Discussion. Those, those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Introduction of an ordinance amending code of the city of Hagerstown by adding and amending sections of chapter sixty-four, building construction, article three, therefore, property maintenance standards.
Madam Mayor, I hereby move that the mayor and council introduce an ordinance to amend this code of the city of Hagerstown, chapter sixty-four, article three, by adding or amending sections to chapter sixty-four, building construction, article three, property maintenance standards, which provide definitions, requirements for floor conditions, entry doors, infestation, fire safety, black, backflow prevention, smoke, carbon monoxide alarm requirements, and occupant health, well-being, and safety. With this ordinance, the code provisions shall become effective immediately upon the effective date of enacting this ordinance.
Second. Discussion. Those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Introduction of an ordinance amending code chapter two, three, zero, transient housing to enhance support to our neighborhoods.
Madam Mayor, I hereby move for the mayor and city council to introduce an ordinance to amend to the code of the city of Hagerstown, chapter two thirty, transient housing, which will amend the definition of a transient visitor and require the transient housing license to be displayed in the lobby or other prominent public place on the premises.
Second.
Discussion.
Madam Mayor, um, I just would personally like to encourage the city to consider, uh, renaming the type of facilities that this ordinance and other ordinances refer to from transient housing to more accurately reflect for the public what it really is, which are hotels and motels and other accommodations. So with that, thank you for your time.
I know this is not, I would like to see that done as well.
Those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Noted, council member?
Thank you.
Introduction of an ordinance amending city code by repealing chapter two zero four, signs and reenacting chapter two zero four, signs off premises and billboards.
Madam Mayor, I hereby move that the mayor and city council introduce an ordinance to amend the city code by repealing chapter two zero four, signs and reenacting chapter two zero four, signs off premises and billboards. The reenacted chapter is a comprehensive update of the chapter originally adopted in nineteen ninety-nine. The purpose of the update is to reasonably accommodate off-premises advertising signs while also establishing minimum standards intended to further traffic safety, maintain and enhance the aesthetic environment of the city, and minimize possible adverse effects of signs on nearby public and private property.
Second.
Discussion. Those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Introduction of an ordinance, adoption of revised drug-free school zone map and amending chapter twenty-five of the city code.
Madam Mayor, hereby move for the introduction of an ordinance to revise a drug-free school zone map to add the Hagerstown Children's School and remove other schools that no longer exist and to amend chapter twenty-five of the city code.
Now it's a race. Now it's a race.
Councilmember bringing, he is louder. Discussion.
Um, this is unfamiliar with this property, as we all are, um, and this is going to be very helpful for the residents, for the other tenants that are there as well. So I'm very thankful for the Hagerstown Children's School for bringing this to our attention and for Jim to also assist in this. So, thank you.
Those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Approve of a resolution, approval of a lease agreement with the Valley Art Association.
Madam Mayor, we move for the approval of a resolution to enter into a lease agreement between the city of Hagerstown and the Valley Art Association for use of the mansion house located within City Park. The term of the lease shall be for five years, beginning on July one, twenty twenty-four, with the possibility of one five-year renewal. The annual rent shall be one thousand two hundred dollars for the first year with a two percent increase per year starting in year two of the agreement.
Second.
Now you're scared. Discussion. Those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Approve of a resolution, twenty twenty-four summer camp program.
Madam Mayor, I hereby move for the approval of a resolution to authorize the execution of contract with the Hagerstown Y M C A, Boys and Girls Club, Girls, Inc., and the Robert W. Johnson Community Center to operate summer play camps for the two thousand twenty-four season. Funding amounts for each camp shall be as follows: Y M C A, eighteen thousand five hundred dollars; Boys and Girls Club, nineteen thousand five hundred dollars; Girls, Inc., twenty-two thousand dollars; and the Robert W. Johnson Community Center, fifteen thousand dollars.
Second.
Those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Approve of a resolution, amendment with American Traffic Solutions, A T S, for red light camera enforcement.
Madam Mayor, hereby move for mayor and council approval of a resolution with American Traffic Solutions, Inc. regarding the operations and implementation of their red light camera enforcement program.
Second.
Discussion. Those in favor? Opposed?
I'm opposed.
Motion carries. Approve of a resolution, execution of an easement agreement with the Hagerstown Housing Authority for cultural trail relocation.
Madam Mayor, I hereby move that the mayor and city council approve a resolution to authorize the execution of an easement agreement with the Hagerstown Housing Authority to allow the relocation of a portion of the Hagerstown Cultural Trail along Baltimore Street.
Second.
Discussion.
Is this, is this the, uh, resolution proposal for relocation to the crosswalk? Or to the area that leads to the crosswalk?
It's for the area that leads to the crosswalk.
Thank you. So for those that are unfamiliar with the relocation or the specific location for the relocation, I'm certainly not opposed to resolution, um, associated with, uh, obtaining an easement for property of the housing authority. However, uh, I don't believe that the relocation of that crosswalk, uh, is, uh, the safest, uh, plan, uh, that, uh, could occur. Uh, if it's my understanding, the crosswalk will now be on the south, uh, the south. I guess it would be the, the left portion of the driveway apron, which wouldn't be an issue, but it'll also be behind, uh, the telephone pole that's there to the entrance to the housing authority, and it will create an angular crosswalk. Um, and I just have concerns with people that are going to be pulling into the housing authority there, uh, or trying to cut around during busy times. And when you place it behind that telephone pole, it places the patron that are trying to cross the street, uh, heading into town, if you will, uh, behind that telephone pole. And I realize there's no easy solution to that, but I just think we're creating an unsafe condition.
Are you proposing that we table this for further information?
No. I'm just stating the reasons that I'm opposed.
Well, that's concerning.
Those in favor? Opposed?
No.
All right. Approval of a partial, a partial really, reallocation of forfeited and best Hagerstown city grant funds. Center grant funds, city center grant funds, sorry.
Madam Mayor, I hereby move-
Madam Mayor, I hereby move for the mayor and council to reallocate three hundred and thirty thousand dollars of forfeited City Center Redevelopment Grant Funds in the Invest Hagerstown Program to be reused by the Program's Review Committee across any of the four Invest Programs listed below. One, Citywide Redevelopment Grant. Two, Rental Rehabilitation Grant. Three, Home Ownership Grant. Four, Sign and Facade Grant.
Second. Discussion?
Abstain.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Abstain.
I abstain.
Those in favor? Is it three?
Three. Three.
All right. Motion carries. Approval of the termination for Invest Hagerstown City Center Redevelopment Grant six through sixteen with West Washington Street, J.R. Investments LLC.
Madam Mayor, I hereby move for the mayor and city council to terminate the Invest Hagerstown City Center Redevelopment Grant approval for two hundred and fifty thousand for J.R. Investments LLC for six dash sixteen West Washington Street. J.R. Investments LLC failed to meet the minimum requirements of the program. Staff shall send a termination letter and the grant shall be forfeited.
Second. Discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Approval on, of on-call plumbing services contract from, uh, May first, twenty twenty-four through April thirtieth, twenty twenty-five?
Madam Mayor, we move for mayor and council to authorize and approve the renewal of the on-call plumbing services and backflow preventer inspection and testing contract for the contract term of May one, twenty twenty-four through April thirty, twenty twenty-five. This is a five-year, this is year five of five optional one-year renewals. Beaver Mechanical Contractors, Inc., pricing is as follows, uh, in the three charts provided.
Second. Discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Approval of sale of truck nineteen ninety-four Simon Duplex Ariel.
Madam Mayor, I hereby move for mayor and council to approve the sale of a nineteen ninety-four Simon Duplex Ariel ladder truck that was recently removed from service by the Hagerstown Fire Department to Clark County Fire. Clark County has made a very reasonable offer of fifty thousand dollars. There is a very small market for a used truck of this age, and according to local fire apparatus dealer, this amount exceeds the projected market value of the apparatus.
Second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Approval of a one-time permanent position for grant coordinator? I'm sorry. Approval of a change order for the curb and sidewalk replacement, physical year twenty-four contract. They were stuck together, sorry guys.
Madam Mayor, I hereby move for the approval of the change order for the curb and sidewalk replacement contract twenty-three dash C S dash, C S dash zero eight to increase the funding for this project by thirty-two thousand five hundred and fifty-six dollars and twenty-three cents. The additional funding is from contract twenty-two dash S A dash twenty-four and represents unspent funds from a previous curb and sidewalk replacement contract.
Second. Discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Approval of a one full-time permanent position for grant coordinator?
Madam Mayor, hereby move for mayor and council to approve the hiring of one full-time permanent position of grant coordinator. This position will serve as the primary administrator of American Rescue Plan Act of twenty twenty-one, funding and all other grants obtained by the city.
Second. Discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. See administrator?
Thank you, Mayor. Just got a couple of things. Uh, the first is, uh, city offices will be closed this Friday, uh, for Good Friday. We will be back open on Monday, and just a reminder that electric terminations will start Tuesday, April second. So give customer service a call if you, uh, if you, uh, need to talk to them, please. Uh, German Easter tours and museums opening weekend. Uh, it's the opening weekend of the Jonathan Hager House with German Easter tours, Friday and Saturday, the twenty-ninth and thirtieth, and the opening weekend of City Park Train Hub on April fifth and sixth. Uh, German Easter tour, uh, Friday and Saturdays from ten to four on March twenty-ninth and thirtieth and April fifth and sixth. That's always a nice, uh, a nice time to go visit Hager House. Vietnam War Veterans Ceremony, a ceremony commemorating the anniversary of the dedication of the Vietnam War Veterans Monument will be held on Friday, March twenty-ninth at twelve o'clock at one eighty-one South Wellness Street in Hagerstown. So don't forget, uh, don't forget that one. And then also, uh, pickleball lessons at Pangborn Park, um, that needs no further explanation. The number of people that play pickleball around here, so utilize Pangborn Park, uh, for pickleball. And that is it for me. Thank you.
Councilmember Asher?
I have nothing to say.
Councilmember Briny?
I have a few things, Madam Mayor, if you could bear with me. I'd like to say that I've been, um, pretty active since our last regular session, attending conference calls with the Hagerstown lobbying firm to discuss many legislative issues, as well as attending the MML Legislative Committee on Zoom Calls. Um, on February twenty-ninth, uh, attended the MML Advocacy Day in Annapolis in support of Hagerstown, and on that same day, personally attended a BISA event here in downtown Hagerstown on March first. Attended Hagerstown Fire Department Crucible in support of those new firefighters completing their training. On the second, attended the Home Builders Association Home Show, um, that was well-attended. March fifth, uh, we had the fabulous State of the City, and that same day, I attended the USMH Spring Open House as a board member in downtown Hagerstown. Uh, March seventh, attended the, uh, Home Builders Association Land Use Council, um, where we had the privilege of hearing from the Hagerstown Water Department presenting the water video and answering questions. Um, also on seventh, attended, um, the Arts Council Open House in downtown Hagerstown. On the fifteenth, attended meetings in Annapolis with the governor, Lieutenant Governor, the Comptroller, and Delegate Grossman and others. Um, on the seventeenth, um, attended, uh, excuse me, on the sixteenth, attended the St. Patrick's Day festivities, um, along with council members Burnett and Schindler. On the twenty-second, attended the Maryland Day Event in Annapolis, um, and had discussions for the betterment of Hagerstown. On the twenty-third, attended the Authentic Community Theater Show, uh, at the Maryland Theater personally, and on the twenty-fifth, yesterday, attended the MML Washington County Chapter hosted by the city of Hagerstown. Um, I'd like to congratulate again, um, Brian Henry, this for his swearing-in last week as Battalion Chief for the Hagerstown Fire Department. Also, in that lane, I want to say job well done to the Hagerstown Fire Department for their great work on the two major structure fires that happened in the past week here in Hagerstown. Uh, while not an Hagerstown issue, my thoughts go out to the families of those who were impacted by the Francis Guy Key Bridge disaster in Baltimore this morning. Madam Mayor, um, at the mayor and council work session last week, the council was asked to give preliminary consensus approval to a potential tiny house project in Hagerstown. Specifically, the ask was to allow for the use of Hagerstown opioid, Hagerstown's opioid restitution fund monies to go towards the project and to allow for the continued planning by the Hagerstown Police Department with two partner organizations, namely the Washington County Health Department and the Community Action Council. There was a consensus among the council to move forward with three favorable council members, including me, um, and one against and one absent. Subsequent to that discussion has come to my attention that the opioid restitution fund monies may not be used for this purpose. Therefore, I am withdrawing my consent towards consensus for this project pending receipt of further information. Specifically, I recommend that the mayor and council confer with the legal counsel who represented the city on the opioid restitution case in an allowed closed session. Madam Mayor, given the withdrawal of my consent towards the consensus, there are now two favorable, favorable and two unfavorable. Thus, it's my understanding that staff shall cease pursuing this project until such time as the council gives its approval. Thank you for your time.
Councilwoman Burnett?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Councilmember Schindler, for that invocation. That was a great, um, leeway to this meeting because we all feel, um, hurt by what happened this morning at FSK Bridge. So my thoughts and prayers goes out to those impacted, and, um, prayers to the leadership there too, collaborating with federal and state and local agencies, and also a huge shout-out to our own fire department and our public safety, uh, personnel on responding to the numerous fire calls and just overall, just keeping it together for us. Thank you. Oh, and, um, happier note, congratulations to our Hagerstown own, Aaron Brooks, for his four-time NCAA wrestling championship.
Nice. Yeah. Yeah. Yes, I agree.
We're gonna get him in here too.
Councilmember Schindler? Councilmember Schindler?
I will echo, uh, Councilmember Burnett's sentiments. Um, my heart goes out to anybody impacted by the tragedy today with the Key Bridge, um, and also to anybody impacted by the numerous fires in this last week. Again, hats off to Hagerstown Fire Department for their hard work. And, uh, also wanted to say, uh, congratulations and a great job, uh, with everybody that was involved in the playing and organizing of the Maryland International Film Festival last week. It was a fantastic event, uh, and I'm honored that our town, um, you know, is the host for such an event. It really shows that we are a hub for the arts, and I think that's fantastic. So, thank you.
So, I was out of town when, um, you know, the destruction of the fires and could see on social media, you know, the things that were happening and the HFD and emergency personnel and everything that was, um, taking place, and, you know, that's a thank you never seems like enough, but thank you. And every once in a while, there's these Herald Mail articles, you know, for instance, uh, recently, since the Salvation Army is closing their Women and Children's Shelter, um, and if the flying boxcars are opening a stadium or, um, just things that always seem to be the city's fault, which they are not. Um, and during States of the City or during GHC meetings or during Chamber of Commerce conversations, we're always asked what people can do, right? And what we always say is, help us help you, you know? Help us say the truth. Help us with the right answers when people, for whatever reason, go on and blame the city and blame local government and blame the people that got elected and, you know, which none of these things are actually occurring. So, on public record, again, I implore the people, the leaders in this community, and I can think of one that does a phenomenal job, and she is not, she is a leader in the community and just constantly battles almost by herself, helping us, you know, say the right things and, and say the truth. So I implore people to help us state the good things that are happening and help us to combat the people that are saying these ridiculously awful and untruthful things. So, thank you.
Thank you. I have my stuff written down, and I have quite a few things that I'd like to talk about as well, and, um, for those of you that know, I am a story, I like to tell stories, and so I have a few. First of all, I just want to start off by saying congratulations, um, to ten you Elite Punishers, uh, for winning the tournament of the Hub City Showdown. Um, Dan Spedden and Visit Hagerstown, thank you so much for your belief, and Ronnie Norman, Troy, and Marcus, that you decided to sponsor this group with less than six weeks left to plan out, and also to sponsor at a levelship of ten thousand dollars. That brought twelve hundred young people into our community, fifty-five teams, four thousand people checked in by ten AM. Our hotels did well, our restaurants did well, our downtown core did well, and I know, because I staffed and helped volunteer, I thank you to Erica Bell and Caroline Anderson and my daughter Journey, who is always with me, but thank you to them for being out volunteering, cleaning up, picking up trash. Thank you to all the men from Gatekeepers that put on your orange hoodies and went out and showed community, showed mentorship, showed strength. Thank you to the women, the teen moms that was out there, that decided that this community was not going to tolerate some things, and so thank you for your advocacy, thank you for your passion, thank you for all the hard work that you do for not only your children, but all of the children that played, um, Saturday and Sunday. I received a ring, um, as well as Dan Spedden and a plaque. It's a quite heavy ring. If you'd like to see it afterwards, I will let you hold it. I did not win. I did not play, I should say, but we all won here in Hagerstown. These kids all got rings. They had a media day. They were proud, they were excited, and it happens at South Hagerstown High School. So thank you, Dwight Freeman, for being there, for being at work, but for having compassion and humility, for loving on every single person that crossed your path. Thank you to the first responders that had to respond and help young people, uh, that had been injured four different times. Thank you to the Hagerstown Police Department for your presence, and not in an intimidating way, but in encouraging way. I think we represented ourselves well as the city of Hagerstown, um, to so many families that had never been here before. I want to say, uh, congratulations to Aaron Brooks. I believe that he deserves the key to the city. I also believe he deserves an Aaron Brooks Day. I would like to see us be able to pull that together, um, all together. Uh, I believe that sports and coaching helps keep our kids grounded, accountable, loved on, and, uh, when everything else may be failing around each, around them, at least they have their teams. And I feel Aaron Brooks is an amazing representative of our community, and not only that, he always gives thanks to the Lord on national TV. Again, something else that Hagerstown should be very proud of. I want to say thank you to Northern Middle, teachers and staff. Um, I was due to arrive at seven-thirty, uh, before City Hall was open, and what was really cool about it is there was a seventh grader that was in that auditorium that knew, that his mom knew, at me, um, as well as another teacher. And so they reached out to my dear good friend, Shirley Baker, and she called me about five minutes to eight. I was sitting on the edge of my bed, um, could not get into my calendar, and she said, uh, "I feel so honored that they are calling me looking for you. You are supposed to be at Northern Middle." I got to Northern Middle within fifteen minutes. I live around the corner. When I walked in, the seventh graders gave me the most profound applause that I could have, uh, it was amazing. I thanked them for their patience, um, also their humility, and also their forgiveness because I'd had seventh graders sitting for almost an hour. I spoke to three different grades that day, seventh grade, eighth grade, and sixth grade. I want to say to the teachers and the counselors and all the staff at Northern Middle, what a job that you have to do every single day. I would challenge my community to please talk to your middle schoolers about respect, about accountability, about love. There was some great things that happened, and I just feel middle school's a very challenging time. I shared with them that I was the first group of kids to go into middle school in Washington County in the fifth grade. I graduated from fourth grade at Fountain Dell, um, felt very big going into Northern Middle as a fifth grader. However, got there quickly and started to hate middle school. Um, and so, because you're the little people then, and I just didn't think it was a good idea, but you should be collecting data right now on this fifth grade class that went in a middle schooler. Um, but I went to Northern Middle, and what a moment it was for me to pull back in there, um, where my daughter also went, right around the corner from where my grandkids go to school as the mayor of the city of Hagerstown. So again, that was full circle for me at Northern Middle. I wanted to say thank you to the Western Enterprise Fire Company for hosting, uh, Maryland Municipal League, Washington County Chapter Meeting. Uh, the food was amazing, and thank you to the staff for taking care of the logistics on that. Um, I also, I was at, uh, Blooms Alley, had local artists. It was SOFO Arts was facilitating a critique and art class. I took my granddaughter in, just accidentally, was gonna stop in and ended up staying, and I would say that we have an amazing community of artists and that don't feel supported, um, that don't feel as though, uh, this is an artist community, but I had to remind them of how important it is to be connected to government. And I think that it's important for government to know that as we remind people to be connected, that we also should remind people, I mean, should be transparent as well as our staff and be open and receptive to people. Um, I'm gonna say thank you to the Hagerstown Fire Department for your service, for your commitment, for your leadership. Two significant fires in four days was extremely heavy. Um, I was taking my grandchildren to, um, to school the morning after the fire right on Oak Hill, and, um, that building, that first of all is a little girl, you live in the Jonathan Street community, that building's the one that, you know, kind of sits up and looks, and it's where you dream of what I dreamed, I will say, of, of my long hair hanging over the banister, and that was like the dream building, and to see it in flames, um, just saddened, saddened me and my family. I'm gonna say it was amazing that I could sit with my grandchildren, um, at six AM, and I say amazing because I believe this is what leadership should be, um, and pray for their, uh, the fire department as we watch you guys still at work within that building at six AM before they had to go to school. So thank you for your leadership. Thank you for your service. Thank you for keeping us safe. To the Hagerstown Police Department, um, congratulations, Sergeant St. Clair. Let's start with that. Um, it was awesome to come in and, and swear in an officer at such a time where things are very heavy in Maryland. Um, Hagerstown Police Department, I just thank you. Um, it's so amazing that my grandson, uh, witnessed an accident that happened right outside of where he was being babysat at, and, uh, he decided he was gonna be vice mayor. And so he wanted to talk to, um, he wanted someone to let him go talk to an officer so the officer could then call chief or captain so that he could let them know there was no casualties and that he needed to be briefed so that he could brief me when he got home. Again, that's what leadership is for me and my family. Um, I'm thankful he did not get to an officer that, and say, you know, because imagine this ten-year-old kid coming up to you and saying, "Call the chief to come down here and talk to me." Um, so I'm thankful that he didn't, but I am amazed at the way that his mind works. Um, I'm gonna say, uh, congratulations to the grand opening of Learn-icity, Learn-icity, Learn-icity. I had to put that in my head in a rhythm because I kept saying it wrong. Um, Andrew Keller, um, learn and earn. What an amazing thing for our, our young people. Our young people, an app where you can come down, and not just young people, I'm doing it too. Financial literacy, but it buy a young person for young people to get more feet on the street. Um, thank you, Aaron, for your leadership. I didn't really talk too much about the talking points and the, the facts of Aaron. I believe that, um, when you tell stories and when you tell the truth of how you meet people and how they make you feel in those moments go much further, and I will say that Aaron Keller is all over the county. He's volunteering. He is in every single community. I walk in, Andrew, did I call him Aaron? Sorry, thank you. Andrew Keller, that's because of Aaron Brooks, Andrew, sorry, A A. Um, I'll say that every room that I've walked in, he's been dressed professionally. He's handled himself, um, like a real professional, an amazing professional, and I told his parents, what, what an awesome kid to have, that decided that he was gonna make a difference in Hagerstown by being a part of the solution. Um, he, he makes people like myself when I walk into a room, hold my shoulders up and walk in a little bit more professional, and that's awesome to say about a young person. Um, I want to say, uh, on not-so-good-of-a-note, landlords, one of the set-outs that happened, um, I believe it was last week, uh, right there on the steps of two businesses, um, I believe that what the law says is what the law is, but I believe there's a better way, that we could probably work together, and we could also make sure that people were able to run their businesses, um, even if someone had an unfortunate situation that feels really inhumane, set out. I was gonna go get my hair done, and on the steps of a barber shop and a beauty salon was everyone's, someone's belongings. It was horrible. The people that were going into so, social services had to step over it, walk through it. It shouldn't happen. It shouldn't happen on our streets. I'm gonna say to my colleagues in Baltimore, um, my prayers, that I think that it is, um, very difficult to do this work and to show up and, and when you love your city as much as I know Mayor Scott does, as much as I know Governor Moore does, and, and speak and lead and keep everyone together, it's commendable to the first responders, um, that the first priority and the only priority was to save lives. Thank you. Um, for Maryland, I believe that we should be praying. I believe, um, that we should be thankful and grateful, and, um, this will impact Maryland, and we don't, we may not know the impact for a week, but we should definitely be keeping everyone in prayer. Um, I will say that be mindful that the city and the county is changing, it's shifting. There's people that come and visit. If you work for the city or county, if you've been here for a long time, watch how you speak to people. It doesn't hurt. There's been some things and some mindsets, and I've, I, I deal with it as well, and it's hurtful. It's hurtful when people are not from here. It's hurtful when people don't realize how tight we are. It's hurtful. And I'll tell you that no matter what, I will always fight for us, but sometimes it feels really, really, really horrible whenever it's stuff around racism, when it's stuff around, um, with political party, and whenever I'm fighting for all sides and both sides and for this entire city and county. It hurts. It hurts when you walk into rooms and you're the only person of color and people won't even speak to you. It hurts. And so I just think that we need to do better. We need to be more compassionate, and maybe people don't need what we think they need. Maybe people just need us to be doing our jobs with a spirit of humility, excellence, as government should. And with that, we're adjourned.